Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Steve Childs is the pastor at Chartel Church of God. He's going to lead us in the invocation. And afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Salyer, she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this morning that you've given us the privilege to be part of such a great city as Oklahoma City. We thank you, as much of this country is in turmoil, we thank you for a city of peace. We thank you for our economic growth and stability. We thank you for the many blessings that you've poured out upon us. Lord, today we pray your protection over all of those who work for our city, that put their lives on the line for us, those who protect and serve, Lord, would you protect them today? And today also, Lord, would you give your city leaders wisdom and discernment that they might lead your people well? These things we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, February is fast approaching, and it will be Allied Arts Month in the city of Oklahoma City. And we have four of our biggest cheerleaders for the arts here today: Deborah McCullough Center, Karen Delaney, Michael Laird, and Terry Cornet. Would the four of you please come up? We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas arts enhance every aspect of life in Oklahoma City, contributing to economic development efforts, enriching our quality of life, driving tourism, and exerting a profound positive influence on the development of our youth. Whereas youth arts education helps to foster discipline, creativity, imagination, self-expression, and problem-solving skills, while also helping to develop a heightened appreciation of artistic endeavors and cross-cultural understanding. Whereas the nonprofit arts industry has a $314.8 million impact on our state's economy, supports the full-time equivalent of more than 10,000 jobs, and generates more than $29 million in state and local government revenues. Whereas Allied Arts has served as a champion of Central Oklahoma's cultural community and infused more than $57 million to enhance our city's quality of life since 1971. Whereas the month of February has been recognized as Allied Arts Month by the Oklahoma City Council, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, local businesses and nonprofits, and the community at large for 45 years. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2016 as Allied Arts Month in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our approval of Allied Arts Month in Oklahoma City and thank these four individuals for all they do. And Debbie, the big kickoff is tonight.
We will. We will kick off at the National Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum tonight, so we're looking forward to that. We, this year, will mark our 45th year of Allied Arts, so we think that's exciting. The campaign will be led by these great Michael Laird and Karen Delaney are the actual chairmen, and then we have honorary chair is Joan McGuire. And we have set a very conservative goal, really taking into account the current economic climate. So by this time in May, we are hoping that we'll be able to announce that we have raised over $3.25 million for the arts to add to the $57 million that we have infused into the arts. But I would be amiss if I did not thank you, Mayor, because one of our largest workplaces remains the employees of the City of Oklahoma City. So let's give the employees of the City of Oklahoma City. It was great fun working with Jim Couch and with all of the leaders to make that campaign very successful. And we have a new approach this year that we are trying, really trying to convey the impact that the arts are making. And so we have this thought generator that we want everyone to be thinking about, and the thought generator is art can. So what can art do for you, for me, for our city? Well, art can build community. Art can, as you heard in the proclamation, generate over $300 million in economic impact. Arts can attract business. Art can create jobs. Art can revitalize neighborhoods. Art can beautify. Art can heal. Art can teach. Art can innovate. Art can inspire. Art can educate. What can art do for you? That's what we're hoping everybody can fill in that blank this year for what the arts can do for you. So we're asking everybody to do this formation, which I need to, everybody do it here with me. Get your two L's right here.
Yeah.
You have to put this down so I can actually do it myself. Two L's right here, put them together as you're looking through your perspective. You guys, you guys.
If someone wants to donate to Allied Arts, and they're not going to the kickoff and don't really have a vehicle to get there, can they go to a website and take care of that?
Many ways to donate, but yes, you can go to alliedartsokc.com. No gift is too small, no gift is too large. It will take a community-wide effort for us to reach that goal of 3.25 million.
Great arts and educational programs from Allied Arts. Thank you all. All right, well, we have thousands of teachers that reside in the city of Oklahoma City, and we have 24 school districts that serve kids that live inside our city limits. And each month, we help select one to be our Teacher of the Month, and we do that along with the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City and, in this case, the Putnam City Schools Foundation. And our winner is Amy Armstrong. Amy, come on forward. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Amy Armstrong has been named Teacher of the Month for January 2016 by Putnam City Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Amy works diligently to include age-appropriate technology skills for each student at Northridge Elementary, grades K through 5. Whereas Amy coaches soccer and basketball at Northridge and has started a technology club for 4th graders. Amy encourages parents to spend time with their child, reading every day after school. Whereas Amy received her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Southern Nazarene University and is pursuing her master's degree in psychology and integration of technology at the University of Oklahoma. Whereas Amy was recognized as Putnam City Schools Excellent Educator in 2015. Now therefore, it's resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Amy Armstrong on her selection as January 2016 Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's hear it for Amy. How cool. Now, it's not official yet. We actually have to vote on this. All right, can I get a motion? And a second? All right, cast your votes. And it's unanimous. Amy, you're our Teacher of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and I'd like to thank my principal and the foundation of Putnam City. They've given me an awesome opportunity to reach out to students in new ways with technology. I actually have one student who, this year, is now in 5th grade, and he has really struggled throughout his career in elementary school, just being engaged with education and making positive choices. But through a program called Bot Ball, which is programming a robot, he has totally switched his mindset and has become enthralled with what we do. And I have pictures of him beneath my table, working with his robot very intently, and I could keep him at school until 9:00 at night now because he is, he's so engaged with the robotic. So I really do appreciate the opportunity that I have been given to teach technology and to engage the students with all of their curriculum, but using something that they are so familiar with and love at home. So thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Amy, and congratulations. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Item 4A is to receive the journal for January 12th, and 4B is to approve the journal for January 5th. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor just won this morning on page 10, under item 9A, CE 925. The applicant has requested that this item be deferred until the February 9th City Council meeting. Again, that's on page 10, item 9A.
And that's deferred for two weeks?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm sorry, three weeks.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we have a couple of requests for revocable permits today, and our first is a request from Cupid Charities to hold the Cupid's Undie Run on February 13th, and that would be downtown. And you must be the gentleman in charge of this event.
I am.
We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Duking, 1117 Northwest 49th.
And tell us about the Cupid's Undie Run.
So the Cupid's Undie Run, it's a not-for-profit run that benefits the Children's Tumor Foundation in research for neurofibromatosis. NF is a neurological disorder that has tumors that grow on the nervous system, can affect, it's affected 2 million people worldwide, and the Cupid's Undie Run, Cupid's Charities provides a significant amount of funding for the Children's Tumor Foundation. So that's what our run's about. We get in on February 13th at the Wormy Dog Saloon. It's a big party with a brief run. In the middle of it, not a race, we kind of just pre-party, and then we go out for a run in the streets in our underwear, and then we go back and finish strong at the Wormy Dog.
Well, sounds, sounds fun. It's going to be in Ward 6 and 7. I'm sure both of you will be out there.
Last year, we lucked out with 70-degree weather on Valentine's Day. This year, I don't expect that.
All right, you, you all want to make a motion?
Yes, we'll make a motion.
All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Thanks and good luck.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know how many times you've received underwear at a City Council meeting.
Never.
But I have a pair.
All right. Today's my lucky day. Well, thank you very much. New standard for coming before the council. All right, item 6B is a revocable right-of-way use permit with DG Productions to hold the Run Lucky 5K and Mission Mile Fun Run. That'll be on March 6th. Looks like we have somebody representing that event. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Rick Ailing, and you need my address?
Yeah.
5629 North Classen.
Okay.
Boulevard. Run Lucky's, this is our sixth annual Run Lucky. We're a fundraiser for the Leukemia-Lymphoma Society, St. Patrick's Day-themed run, if you want to come see me dressed as a leprechaun. I'll be out there, and several other people too as well.
And you're running 5K?
5K race, yes, sir. You can register for that at runlucky.com.
Great. It's in Ward 2, and Ed just stepped out, so how about somebody else make a motion?
My motion.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, good luck. All right, we'll assess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
Who do you have?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions about the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Just two items today.
We'll adjourn.
All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA convened as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where there's just the claims and payroll.
We'll adjourn.
All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Is that such a individual consideration?
Second.
All right, are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, I did have a couple. I want to talk about 7H, 7I2, and 7J.
All right, Meg, jump in there.
Sure, thanks, very quickly. 7H, I just wanted to make note of, is, again, part of our 1% for public art program. I see Robbie here. I just wanted to mention that this is the interior piece for the police headquarters. The exterior, fabulous exterior sculpture's already been installed, and this is the inside lobby that will be in place shortly. Item 7I2 is also just something interesting to mention. This is a resolution authorizing you, Mayor, to sign the National Registered Nomination for the Sunshine Cleaners over on Classen. Fabulous building that's about to become, I think, a new brewery, and a very interesting project, and the listing on the National Register will be very helpful for its redevelopment. And then 7J, I just wanted to mention, as Councilman Greenwell did last week, in Ward 5, this is a series of 23 different locations in Ward 6, receiving street resurfacing repair and sidewalk placement for a total of about $2.5 million all over the ward. So I just wanted Ward 6 residents to know that lots of street work would be going on. Thank you.
Great. All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Nothing on the concurrence docket today, so we'll move on to item 9. Leader items that require a separate vote. Item 9A was deferred three weeks. What is three weeks from today?
February 9.
February 9th will be the new date for 9A. All right, item 9B is the collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police. All, all put to bed? Congratulations.
What's the item?
Anyone here from the FOP this morning? Well, our appreciation for everything they do for us, and glad this is behind us. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Mayor, I will point out that on Friday, I received notice from both the FOP and the IFF, their desires to begin negotiations for next fiscal year, so, it's a year-long process.
It was a fun 30 seconds, anyway. All right, item 9C. I understand we do not need executive session on this item, so just a motion to approve would be in order?
It's a motion.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D, I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
What's the item?
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9E, I understand we do not need executive session on this item. It's ready to go?
What's the item?
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F, I understand we do need executive session. Is there a motion?
Executive.
All right, cast your votes. And item 9F moves into executive session. Item 9G is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, how about a motion then?
Cast your votes.
It passes unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 10A?
What's the item?
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. 11 is items from council, and Councilman Pettis and Stone Cypher have an item they want to introduce today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm asked that Rick will come and explain the amendment. This particular amendment came at the request of Millwood Public Schools.
Good morning, Richard Smith, City Attorney's Office. This amendment would be amending ordinance section 30-428 and 30-430 to make it a violation of our aggressive panhandling if you panhandle within 50 feet of an elementary school. As Councilman Pettis said, we found out that there was some panhandlers that were coming very close, if not on school property, to go after elementary school children. We believe that that would be a violation of our aggressive panhandling and not be a First Amendment violation. It'd be the conduct if they continued to do so. So we're asking council to change our aggressive panhandling to prohibit anyone from panhandling within 50 feet of an elementary school.
As I recall, the issue was on the walk to school.
Yes, and what we did was, at the request of ACLU, we, originally, we had talked about 50 feet from school property or school bus stops. But for, in Millwood's case, you have students who actually ride mass transportation, which is right there off of 6030 and ML King, you have two bus stops. And so I have personally witnessed, along with the superintendent, along with parents, panhandlers being aggressive towards those students who walk from the bus stop to the school. So that's one of the reasons why we moved from 20 feet to 50 feet. And also, at the recommendation, after working and meeting with ACLU, they wanted across-the-board feet distance. So that's, that's the 50 feet. And I do understand there are some concerns from Curbside Chronicle and some other groups. So we do plan on meeting with them in reference to the moving the distance between 20 feet to 50 feet. But that's, again, one of the reasons why we did include, expand the boundaries, the distance because of the mass transit, because we do have elementary kids who do walk from the bus stops on 6030 and ML King to Millwood. And I personally have witnessed how aggressive the panhandlers are towards those students who cannot stand up for themselves.
And in terms, excuse me, in terms of the 50 feet from the elementary school property, what that does is keep them off of the sidewalks that are directly in front of the school. They would at least have to be across the street.
The one thing I would say is that when Superintendent Woods came and spoke to us, I was very moved by her concern with children being vulnerable, and so I think this is a very, very important issue that we all need to discuss.
I have to agree with that. I was certainly concerned when the principal came to speak to us, and I truly understand the issue with the schools. I am a little bit concerned, very concerned about the change in the definition from 20 to 50 feet with regard to outside of cafes or restaurants or other businesses. In our median safety ordinance discussion, you know, we talked a lot about moving folks from the dangerous medians in the middle of our streets, but continuing to allow the option for things like the Curbside Chronicle to sell their papers on sidewalks and in districts like the Plaza District, and this expansion of the definition, I think, has a big impact. And so I'm very grateful to Councilman Stone Cypher and Pettis to be willing to sit down. This is just an introduction today, so we have lots of time to talk about it, but I think we need to work a little bit harder to discuss some of the, once again, unintended consequences.
We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak, including the woman you guys mentioned, Cecilia Woods is here.
Cecilia Robinson Woods, 8820 Northeastern Avenue, and I am here representing Millwood Public Schools. Thank you, council, and thank you, Mayor, for hearing this. One of the things I want to add to this is a bit of a correction. There are actually three bus stops that my kids can potentially be impeded on their way to school. And even though right now there's been one consistent panhandler on any given Friday afternoon, Monday afternoon, there can be up to five, and so we've seen a large increase in traffic. And the 50 feet, when I came, I asked for 100, because the median that actually is on the north side of the highway actually goes all the way to my preschool playground. And so it has the, panhandlers have the ability, if they could stand on the median, to be as close as my preschool, I mean, 50 feet from my preschool playground. And while I won't say that we've ever had an incident in where a child is reported or a parent has reported, we have all witnessed our children walking around panhandlers. So we put them in an unsafe situation just to avoid panhandlers. So this is a good first step. My concern is not today, quite honestly, as much as it is five years from now. If we don't put actions in place, that really polices, if you will, the amount of space that panhandlers can occupy, especially around a school, there's really nothing to stop them from coming closer and closer. So I appreciate the consideration.
You're welcome. Thank you for your work. EJ Green?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to point out, EJ Green is one of our youth council members who probably represent the best board in Oklahoma City, Ward 7.
My name is EJ Green. I am senior class sponsor, and I'm also, like he said, Ward 7 representative. Essentially, I just want to thank you all for the support in the ordinance, but also that the ordinance isn't aimed to villainize the panhandlers, but essentially to protect the children from Millwood and all the other schools. Because for Millwood's instances, it's a bunch of, like, elementary school kids that have to walk past a panhandler to go home essentially, or to ride the bus is to go home. So to have little kids, like, these are second, first graders sometimes, walking with, sometimes their older siblings that are only in 5th grade, trying to walk them home or walk them on the bus, and having to walk around a panhandler. Now, this panhandler isn't aggressive now, but whenever he's panhandling and asking for money, the traffic changes. And for little energetic kids, when the traffic changes and the older sibling has to control them, sometimes the traffic, when it changes, it makes it difficult for them to protect their little sibling. So also, if we don't stop it now, or preempt it, or create a zoning around it now, the panhandlers that come later could be more aggressive and could create a problem or situation with the children that are coming out.
All right. EJ, thanks for your interest and your work. All right, the item is just being introduced today. We'll be setting a public hearing for January 26th. Do you all want to make a motion on this?
Can I just ask a question? How, how do we define, so we're defining panhandling or soliciting as any unwanted communication? What exactly does that?
Didn't, didn't we restrict that to any unwanted solicitation of money?
Yes, it says the.
Or other thing of value. The reason for that is you might have solicitors that are coming on trying to sell the school something.
Or political. I mean, this doesn't say.
No, it doesn't. Right.
This says the defined terms beg, begging, panhandling, and soliciting would be modified to specify that the prohibited activity involve an unwanted communication.
If you, if you look at 30-430A under definition, page 3.
Okay, but hold on. Say that again?
30-430A, on page 3. Beg, begging, or panhandling shall be synonymous and shall mean soliciting money or objects of value. We were trying to take care of what you're suggesting, when they're soliciting ideas, soliciting the sale of things.
So Rick, help me within how this would relate to selling the Curbside Chronicle? Would that prohibit, so these newspapers are?
Yes, it would apply to that. Solicitation includes the exchange of money for a good.
That's the way I read it once.
Yeah, it would apply to that.
Okay, well, that's what we need to talk about.
The problem is to say that this is going, the change would do anything different, because it's already illegal for a Curbside Chronicle to go to outside cafes within 20 feet. So that's just extending it 30 more feet, so they could still do it outside the 50 feet. They can still do it anywhere they want to, on sidewalks. That is not related to a, whatever the numbers are here, the cafes, ATMs, public bathrooms, et cetera. There are places that they could still be selling the magazine.
It gets pretty complicated when you start talking about a place like the Plaza District, though, where we've narrowed the streets and built cafes outside, and, you know, that's where we've just essentially directed people to. So I think we just got to have a little bit of a further discussion about how we, how we set some of these definitions.
And that's certainly something that council can decide, 20 or 50 feet.
I just think, I mean, this goes far beyond schools and children. This is, as Meg, I mean, this is eliminating entire district.
And, and again, we moved, originally, it was, we was going to keep it almost the same, but at the recommendation from ACLU, they.
to keep it almost the same, but at the recommendation from ACLU, they had suggested moving from 20 feet to 50 feet. I met with ACLU several times, and they made that suggestion. And again, I spoke to their leadership time after time about this. And what they said was that you had 20 feet, then you had 35 feet, then you had 50 feet, let's make it all one distance. And so, that's the reason why we came up with 50 feet. Dr. Woods did suggest 100 feet. ACLU, they have preferred 50 feet across the board. And so, that's where the number came from after sitting down again with ACLU.
Okay. So just to repeat back what I heard, we've never had an incident that people are having to walk away from to avoid interaction. Is that, have we had any incidents?
Are you talking about the schools or where?
Schools.
There's been several close calls, and one of them I actually witnessed myself, where there was a elementary student who walked, and this was on a Friday, Friday afternoon, where you did have, at that time, you had six panhandlers right off of 60th and ML King, and there was this, it was a elementary student and also a middle school student who was sitting at the bus, and you had this panhandler who was in the wheelchair, who wheeled his way to where the bus stop was to sit there and harass those students. I then made a U-turn, illegal U-turn, I will admit, to run the panhandler off. So I've witnessed it for myself, especially when you have five or six panhandlers at one location. That's scary for a little kid. And so, only thing that I'm trying to do, and only thing that we're trying to do, is protect those who cannot protect themselves. And at the time, when that did happen, I did immediately call down to see was there anything we can do to stop that, stop that panhandler. Of course, when I made the U-turn, he wheeled himself right on back in the median. And I thought it was funny that this is a person who's in a wheelchair that, in the median on 60th and ML King is a huge curb, but he was somehow able to get up out of his wheelchair and place the wheelchair in the middle of the median and walk to where he places his chariot. So, but I've witnessed it for myself.
Okay, so it's really, it's less the schools and more the districts that I think is my initial kind of concern. I mean, the way it's being portrayed in the paper is this is a preemptive strike on, say, the city's new 80-acre park. So you're eliminating-
No, no, no. Our attention's, again, deals with public transit, because, again, we have kids who ride the city bus. In Millwood's case, we have, we have a lot of kids who ride the city bus, who gets off of the city bus and walks to Millwood.
And I don't know if you're in the room and we discussed it, but it's our intention to let everybody be heard and hear all sides and all views, and we will visit the ordinance.
But you've talked with ACLU and they-
Yes, time after time on this. And the original amendment dealt with 50 feet from school property and bus stops and public transit. They gave the recommendation, again, Councilman Shadid, to move from 20 feet to 50 feet to make it even across the board. So we're not showing any distance, any difference between ATMs from school. They want it across the board. So, I mean, I met with them time after time on it, and that was their recommendation.
Okay. So, final question. So this would preclude Curbside Chronicle activity within 50 feet of any outdoor seating area of any cafe, restaurant, or other business, ATM, mass transit stop, public toilet, pay telephone?
It would.
Okay.
Is there any subtlety in the language where it says unwelcome? You know, Kenny, is there, I think I remembered reading-
Unwanted?
Unwanted.
Right.
So if it's wanted, you know, if somebody's sitting at Saint's Outdoors and they want to purchase a Curbside Chronicle, it would not be a violation of this ordinance for them to transact that business?
You have to have some word in there that indicates that it's not a solicitation that has been invited by someone. You could say uninvited instead of unwanted, if that was clear. But it has to be, people don't essentially invite the solicitation. In other words, if the school invites, say, the Girl Scouts on their property to sell their school their cookies, then that's a wanted communication.
And so, the person that owns the mule could invite Paul Boyer, whoever, from the Curbside Chronicle to come offer the-
If the driver, I've seen drivers roll down their window and motion to people to come over. That obviously would be an invited communication. But without that in there, then you basically have eliminated all solicitations on school property.
Right. Well, maybe that's an avenue to work on a little bit, to expand that clarification-
Right.
That it's a wanted activity rather than an unwanted activity.
I think there's a consensus from the Council that we want the Curbside Chronicle to continue to be able to be sold. So, just so anybody that's watching is clear, and I think we're trying to develop some language where we can take care of the issues involving solicitation and children near Millwood, but also allow the Curbside Chronicle to continue its operations.
It does seem like uninvited is a better word than unwanted, but it seemed like it'd be more clear.
So the item introduced today, public hearing will be January 26th, and then a final hearing scheduled for February 9th.
And on the making it consistent along the 50, 50 feet, I can certainly appreciate that, and I'm fine with it written that way. But I think that there is certainly an argument for making it different for a public, for public, private school and a cafe. So I somewhat agree with, you know, making it consistent, but I think that maybe the unintended consequences of making it consistent are-
Yeah, excuse me. You could carve out the cafe area and make it a separate and make it 20 feet, if that's the will of the Council.
I think that that's, I think that that's logical to do it that way, or to do it the way it's written, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Is there a motion, then, to introduce this item today?
Second.
All right. Anyone else hoping to speak on this item today? We'll have a public hearing on January 26th. All right, cast your votes. That item is introduced today. All right, other items from Council. Mark, you have anything else?
Nothing today, thank you.
All right, John?
And actually, I do. I just want to thank those who were involved in the celebration this past weekend, the Martin of the King celebration. Special thanks to Mr. Garland Poore with the Oklahoma City NAACP for his work and leadership in the Martin of the King Coalition. I believe all the Martin of the King events were definitely a success. Thank you, Mr. Poore.
Sounds like it. Meg?
Yeah, just to echo John's comments, thank you so much. I got to see the parade from several different venues yesterday, and darn, it was cold. But it looked like there was a good crowd, and it went very well, lots of celebrations. So thank you for all the early coordination. It makes a huge difference.
All right. David? Pete? Larry? Ed?
One quick thing. I just, one reason that this is a little sensitive, I guess, is the report that Sooner Care is going to, is considering cutting off payments to all mental health providers in private practice. And I just, I know that we don't have a lot of control over Sooner Care, although we could, we could implore the legislature and Governor Fallon to do something that would increase diversity of our economy, give a much-needed stimulus to our economy, and that's federal expansion of Medicaid. And I just, I've noticed in my own practice, other practitioners, Medicaid is broke, they've, they're just introducing all kinds of obstacles in terms of getting certain procedures or surgeries approved. They've kind of outsourced it to this third party called Evocor on August 1st. And basically, they're just systematically denying healthcare, in my opinion, to the poor. And so, I think that the, with us at the bottom of the rankings, it's going to get worse. The mental health issues are going to get worse, and we could solve that to a large degree, as well as giving much-needed stimulus to our economy in the healthcare sector if we would, if we would do the federal expansion of Medicaid. And this body could implore that to happen, and I'd ask for some consideration of some kind of resolution or moving that to our legislative committee.
All right, James? I had something I wanted to mention. February 5th and 6th is a Friday and a Saturday. The Oklahoma Dental Association is going to give free dental care at the Cox Convention Center. And in the past, when they've held these events, they've had over 1,000 people on each day. But as you visit with people who you think might be interested in being a part of this for themselves or their children, it'd be good to continue to spread the word. February 5th and 6th at the Cox Convention Center, and from past experience, they urge people to get there early, because people start lining up early, and of course, there's a finite amount of people they can get through the system. But they should, they expect over 1,000 each day. It's a great service, and the Oklahoma Dental Association should really be praised, I think, for all the efforts that they put into that event. City manager reports.
Mayor, we've made some modifications to the transit system over the last several years, actually, and I've asked Jason come this morning to give us an update on some of those changes. Jason Farish.
All right, well, good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update related to the embark public transportation system here in Oklahoma City. This morning, I think what we'll do is we'll spend a little bit of time looking at some ridership data and some frequency data. We'll talk a little bit about some of our community outreach efforts, and then we'll look forward to some of the projects that we recently completed and some projects that we have in progress, all with the intent of supporting the Council priority to develop a public transportation system that works for all citizens. So the first slide that we're going to take a look at this morning is our fixed route ridership for our weekday service. And the reason we wanted to look at our weekday service ridership is, of course, this is where the clear majority of our passenger trips are provided. It's our Monday-through-Friday service. In addition to that, it is, of course, where we've made the most system changes and improvements over the last several years, and where we've invested the majority of the additional resources that have been authorized by Council over a very similar time period. So with that, I wanted to just share with you some of these numbers. You can see we have three years' worth of average daily ridership by month, with FY14 being the blue line on your graph, FY15 the red line, and then six months of the current fiscal year represented by the green line on your graph. And as you recall, the system enhancements that we implemented really went into effect at the very tail end of FY14. In fact, it was the last week of April. So for comparison purposes, I would use FY14 as our baseline, what our average daily ridership was per month prior to our system enhancements. And then you can see by looking at FY15 and FY16, we've actually seen 18 consecutive months of year-over-year ridership growth. In fact, in FY15, our cumulative passenger trips increased by nine and a half percent, and our average daily ridership was right around 11,108 passenger trips. And then we followed that up with, through the first six months of this current fiscal year, an additional five and a half percent in cumulative ridership growth, and our average passenger trips are now 11,628. So I share that information with you just to give you a sense of how some of these changes have impacted our ridership, particularly now that we have kind of our first fiscal year of those system enhancements behind us. The next slide is a look at our ridership in terms of riders per service hour. And I wanted to include this slide this morning, because this is one of the Council priority indicators, our riders per service hour. And again, it's really the best way to look at our ridership from an efficiency standpoint and when we're comparing ridership year-over-year, particularly when there's changes in the service hours. So I have two different sets of data on this graph. You can see the blue line represents our riders per service hour over the last five years. And then the red bar chart is the number of service hours that we have for our weekday service. And I really wanted to focus my comments on the FY14 and FY15 time periods. And you can see that with the system enhancements, the additional funding, the emphasis on improving frequency in the bus system, we actually increased our total system hours in FY15 to 159,128. That's about a 10.7% increase from the level of service prior to our system enhancements. And then, as you'll notice, even though we increased our revenue hours substantially, our riders per service hour remained relatively stable. It was actually down about 1.1% at 17.8 riders per service hour. So I share that comparison with you to point out that we increased the service hours substantially and yet maintained, for the most part, our riders per service hour. And I think that really speaks to how quickly our customer base embraced and adapted to the changes in the system. And I think it's indicative that the investment by the Council certainly improved the public transportation system, and customers and citizens have both recognized that. The next slide here is one that I don't believe I've had an opportunity to share with Council for, I'm sorry, before, but it takes a look at our frequency. And again, frequency was one of the main things that we tried to improve when we implemented our system changes. And I wanted to give you a sense of kind of where we've come in terms of frequency over the last several years. So at the bottom of this graph here, you'll see some frequency from FY13. And as you'll recall, I mentioned we implemented our changes in FY14, so the numbers you see for FY14 include those changes. So prior to the system enhancements, we were averaging between 43 to 53-minute frequency on our bus routes. Again, that kind of depended on whether it was during peak times or whether it was at midday. With our transition to implementing the transit system analysis in FY14, we were able to improve that frequency to just over 37 minutes. And then with additional funding provided in FY15, we were able to decrease, or I should say, improve frequency to under 37 minutes system-wide, and that's where we currently stand today. In fact, we have four local bus routes in Oklahoma City that are not on 30-minute frequencies. All the rest of our routes are. In addition to that, we have the two 15-minute corridors within the system. And then, one of those four routes, it's not on 30-minute frequencies, does provide service every 45 minutes. So we feel like we've really gained some ground in reducing the amount of time that people are having to wait for the bus. And as we know, the key to any successful transit system is frequency, and we feel like we've really gained some ground in those areas, too, again, thanks to additional investment in the system. Also wanted to share an update about our night service. As you know, we had a pilot program that we launched just about a year ago today, bringing fixed route bus night service for routes 23 and routes 11, where we provide bus service until midnight on one-hour frequencies between the hours of 7:00 and midnight. Those routes, as you recall, serve the north side of Oklahoma City on 23rd Street. We have an east-west crosstown along 23rd. And then Route 11 is a east-west crosstown at the southern portion of Oklahoma City along 29th and 15th. So this is a map of our current night service. You can see those routes both pulse at the Transit Center and at the west end of the city, out at Greenfield Center Place on the hour, so transfers between the routes are available. And then in terms of our ridership, this next slide looks at the first six months of the pilot program, and this is the cumulative ridership for weeknights between the hours of 7:00 and midnight. And you can see that aside from May, where, as you'll recall, we had a lot of rain and wet evenings that we think impacted our ridership, we really saw steady growth month over month. I will point out that in January, the numbers are pretty low, but again, we implemented this service at the end of January, so that really only includes about seven to maybe 10 days of ridership. We were very encouraged by our June numbers, where we ended up finishing the year with about 2,900 cumulative passenger trips on Route 23 in June, and then on Route 11, just over 1,400 cumulative passenger trips. So we're encouraged by the trend that we see in the ridership. Another way to look at the evening ridership is through riders per service hour. And the reason I included this graph this morning is because as we were developing the pilot program, one of the questions we wanted to answer was, you know, well, how are we going to know if this program- are we going to know if this program is successful? It's a very limited evening service. It's only two routes. As you're aware, we have not had a bus service at night in Oklahoma City for a considerable amount of time. And so what would be a good gauge of success? And so we determined that if we could average half of the riders per service hour during our evening service that we're able to accomplish during the day, then we thought that would be a pretty good indicator that we should look at expanding the pilot program. And you can see that in April and May, we came very close to achieving that goal and then actually exceeded that goal during the month of June at 9.83 riders per service hour. So we spent a lot of time talking about fixed route bus ridership, and rightfully so. As I mentioned, that's where the majority of passenger trips occur. In fact, over 3 million last year just through our fixed route ridership. But we do offer some other transit programs that I thought I might share with council and just, again, provide kind of a quick update as to some other services we provide. Through our senior adult transit programs in FY15, we provided almost 63,000 trips. And these programs are provided, working in partnership with the area-wide agent agency, daily living centers, organizations like that. And what we do is we coordinate trips for seniors for non-emergency medical appointments. We coordinate trips to congregate meal sites, shopping trips for seniors, and so forth. And so you can see there's certainly a demand for those services. In addition to that, we do provide paratransit service. And this service is a transportation service that is primarily for people with disabilities that are unable to use our regular fixed route bus service. An individual must qualify for this service, but once they've qualified, they can actually call us, schedule an appointment or a reservation. We'll pick them up at their place of origin and take them to their destination. And through our paratransit service, through FY15, we provided nearly 44,000 passenger trips. So I hope those slides give you a sense of kind of the activity in the transit system, what our ridership has been doing. And I wanted to shift the focus now and start talking a little bit about some of the community relations and media engagement that we have accomplished over the past year. And the reason we feel this is so important is we want to demonstrate, continue to demonstrate to the community that we are a community partner. We want to take every advantage that we can to educate people about public transportation. And so through some of these community relations programs, we're able to accomplish that. So I have a few pictures on the slide this morning to talk about. And one would be the Hall Pass program. And I know that council is very familiar with the Hall Pass program. Last year, we successfully launched that program, a pilot program with Emerson High School. It was received very well. And then in September of 2015, the COTPA Board of Trustees expanded that Hall Pass program to include all middle school and high schools within the Oklahoma City Public School District. And so the way that program works is a high school or middle school student is able to purchase an unlimited bus pass for $10, which is about an 80% discount from the normal monthly pass price. And they can use that bus pass to get to and from school, of course, but they can use that bus pass anytime our service operates. So for extracurricular activities before and after school, maybe they need the bus to get to a part-time job or for a weekend activity. What it really does is, besides help students get to school, it really just opens up, gives them a transportation option so they can experience the community in which they live. And so we certainly appreciate the work with the Joint Education Task Force, along with the school district and the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation in working through expanding that program. Then there's a picture here in the bottom left of your screen. This is a photo taken from our annual free health fair that we hold every October. This last year, we had about 400 participants. And those that attended the health fair could receive free flu vaccinations, different health screenings, some dental work, those kinds of things. And that's always a good program for us. And then in the bottom right, you see a photo of our bus at the Open Streets event from last spring on 23rd Street. And you can see by the line of people there waiting to get on the bus, it was a great opportunity for us to showcase our equipment and our services and introduce people to public transportation that maybe have never really stepped foot on a bus before. So it was really an encouraging event and one that we plan to continue to participate in. We've also produced a series of educational videos. And when we talk about all the changes that we've made to our bus system, improved frequency, technology such as the real-time text alerts, the electronic journey planners, you know, we want to make sure that we get the word out to our customer base and to the community that this is what we offer as a public transportation system now. And so one thing we've done is, again, we've produced a series of videos. You can see the topics up there. They range from how to ride to how to plan your trip, even how to conduct yourself while riding the bus. And we've made all of these videos available as content on Channel 20. We have these videos at our YouTube page, and so we can direct customers or people that just want to learn more about public transportation, we can direct them to these videos. And so they've really turned out nicely and are a huge benefit in trying to communicate our different services to our stakeholders. And then, of course, the media is always an area that we try to concentrate some of our public awareness efforts in. We usually try to partner with the media in any way that we can. And anytime that we have an opportunity to work with the media beyond just a traditional press release, we try to do that. And we had a couple of unique opportunities last year. The first one that I'll talk about is in the September 2015 SOSX magazine. There's about a 14-page section in that magazine, and I think you were provided a copy of that this morning. There's about 14 pages there, a section called or titled "Embark the City." And it's really interesting that they essentially did a fashion shoot using some of our equipment and our bus stops. And this was all shot as, you know, more or less part of our normal service. We didn't reserve a special bus for the event. And so I think you'll have an opportunity to look at the pictures. I think you'll enjoy those. There's a couple of them on this slide that you can see on the left-hand side of the screen. And then also, Spokys was featured in the Electronic Velocity magazine, the most recent version of that magazine. And so we appreciate the chamber thinking of Spokys and including that in that publication. And so as we've looked at the slides that I've discussed so far, hopefully you at least have an idea of kind of the status of the transit system, again, what we're accomplishing in terms of frequency improvements and ridership. And what I'd like to do now is just take a few minutes to share with you some recent projects or some projects that are currently underway. And the first one that I'm certainly excited to talk about is the expansion of the pilot program for night bus service. So on January 25th, a week from yesterday, actually, we will add two new routes to our evening lineup. So we will be providing bus service on Routes 5 and on Routes 13N, again, beginning on January 25th. And so as you can see by the map, the purple line is Route 5. It serves Klassen Boulevard, Western Pennsylvania, on up to Memorial, even out to Mercy Hospital. And then Route 13N serves the southern portion of Oklahoma City, serving Western, down to 74th Street, and then as far west as O-C. And then that southeast quadrant there is actually 104th and Santa Fe. So we're very excited about the opportunity to provide two additional routes for our evening lineup. And again, these buses will run on one-hour frequency, similar to 23 or the same as 23 and 11, and pulse at the Transit Center on the hour. So we've had a lot of interest about the expansion of the night service program, a lot of questions about when it's going to be here. And so we're looking forward to rolling that out. And we'll really follow a very similar public awareness and marketing campaign that we used with 23 and 11. And you can see some of the marketing materials here on the slide that we'll use. But some of the methods we'll use to create awareness about the routes is, one, we'll do some door hangers. And we've found these to be very successful when promoting 23 and 11. We actually will put out probably anywhere from 14,000 to maybe 16,000 door hangers in neighborhoods that are along the routes. You'll also see we have some posters designed. We'll be contacting businesses along the routes and multifamily residences and trying to display our posters, allowing people to know about the new night service. And then, of course, we'll do some radio, some digital advertising, and even take advantage of some bus bench advertising along the routes that are going to be having or that we're adding the new night service to. Social media, of course, will be a big part of how we market or create awareness about our night service. On the slide here, you can see a couple of the Facebook posts from our initial launch of night service for 23 and 11. We will continue a similar process. What you'll expect to see, if you follow us on Twitter, you'll expect to see a flurry of activity here as we launch the service. And then we'll slow down a little bit and go back into kind of our normal mode of social media advertising. And then as the weather gets warm and the days get longer, we will once again emphasize and publicize the new routes on 5 and 13. So we're looking forward to expanding that ridership or expanding those routes, to say the least. All right, the next slide we have here is a video. We've, what we've done is we've produced a video that kind of captures some of the improvements that we've made to the bus system. And the reason we produce this video is, one, the video itself is 60 seconds in length. And so we want to provide it as content on Channel 20. But then also, we have the flexibility to break the video up into smaller segments, say, 15-second segments that we can use with social media. And again, that's to promote our night service and just to promote our service in general. So I'd like to go ahead and share that video with you. It's about 60 seconds in length. See if we have it queued up and ready to go.
At Embark, we're not just stops on a map or collection of random people. We are a community connected.
It gets me from my place to my evening shift. I'm just now getting back on my feet, so it's really nice to have this option.
Since I usually don't get off till around 11, having this late-night route is really a stress reliever for me.
Between my job and taking classes, this route just works easier for me.
Sometimes I even get all my homework finished up. The free Wi-Fi helps, too.
So I love it that I'm able to maintain my independence, get out and shop, and do the things I love to do.
Our choices on where to live, work, learn, meet, and play grow with the connections we create. And with strong connections come economic opportunities and vibrant communities. Where public transit goes, community grows. Plan your journey at embarkok.com.
Okay. So hopefully you're able to recognize the subtleties there of the night service, the new bus stop that was featured. And of course, hopefully you heard the mention of the free Wi-Fi service. And that's the next project I wanted to make sure I updated council on. And that is the fact that we now have free Wi-Fi on all of our buses. Our entire fixed route bus fleet of 59 buses has Wi-Fi capabilities. And so regardless of what bus a customer might be on or what part of the city they might be traveling in, they have access to that amenity. And we've really seen some positive feedback on the free Wi-Fi. We know that folks are using it as we monitor some of the data usage. And again, we think it's just another one of those services that not only appeals to our current customer base, but we think will be a strong incentive for people that might be considering using public transportation to go ahead and give it a try. The next slide I have here is a map of the different bus stop upgrades that we currently have in process across the city. I shared a similar map with council during the budget presentation, but we look primarily at new bus shelters only, when, in fact, in addition to shelters, there are other bus stop upgrades that we are making across the city. So I will talk quickly about the shelters. We do have 45 shelters, 45 new shelters, that we are constructing across the city. You can see those represented at the general vicinity of those shelters, represented by the blue dots on your map. We have 35 of those shelters completed and being used on a day-to-day basis. We expect the other 10 to be finished by the end of the fiscal year. In addition to the new shelters that you see on the map, we began compiling our next list of shelters. And we have about 20 other locations identified where we plan to construct shelters and have those shelters completed, again, by the end of the fiscal year, probably no later than late summer. So when you think about the 45 we have in progress now, the additional 20 that we plan to construct, we're at about 65 new shelters system-wide. And keep in mind, when we started this project, adding new shelters, we had about a total of 75 in the system. So this is something we will continue to look at and plan for and expand on an annual basis. We also have about 11 locations represented by the red triangle on your map there, where we're creating or improving accessibility to existing stops. We were awarded a Transportation Alternatives Program grant through ACOG. And so what we're doing with those funds is we're identifying bus stops where curb cuts are needed or maybe an extension of the sidewalk, whatever we can do to make that bus stop more accessible. And then we've also been able to partner with the MAPS Office, and in particular, with the MAPS 3 Sidewalks Phase 3, we were able to identify 17 locations where new sidewalks were being constructed where there is also a bus stop. And so we partnered with the MAPS Office, and they have agreed, as part of that project, to construct a concrete pad in conjunction with the sidewalk as it's being constructed. And then that then allows us to be able to place a bench or a shelter at that location that's completely ADA accessible. And it is important to note that COTPA is actually funding the improvements for those concrete pads for the bus shelters, but we're working alongside MAPS as part of the overall project. And then we're also working with the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department has allowed us to weigh in and participate in some of the geo-bond projects as they're coming online. And we're able to identify different bus stop locations where there's some type of street improvement that is occurring. And again, the same idea is to be able to construct concrete pads or improve bus stop accessibility while those street projects are being implemented. On the map here, you'll see particularly along 10th Street between council and Portland, about 32 different locations where, again, we're working with Public Works to improve bus stops. Most of that work will be concrete pads for benches. There'll be several shelters installed along that street as well. So in all, we have about 106 locations that we're working on across the city in order to upgrade and improve our bus stops. Two other items I wanted to share with you this morning. One is I wanted to remind council about our Northwest Corridor Concept Plan. This was a plan that we worked on this summer. We had a couple of community meetings. And through COTPA's application to the USDOT, Oklahoma City was recognized as one of five cities that received from assistance from the DOT in what they are calling a Public Health Corridor Planning Framework. And so really, what that allowed us to do was be able to use kind of this planning framework and try to answer the question. You know, if you take a corridor, in this case, the corridor we looked at was Klassen Boulevard, north from downtown to Northwest Expressway, and then Northwest Expressway on out to about the Meridian area. We wanted to try to answer the question, on a corridor such as that, that is, has such high volumes of automobile traffic, is there a way to integrate enhanced transit, improve connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists, and a way to influence public health? And obviously, anytime we can open up accessibility to hospitals, healthcare providers, pharmacies, grocery stores, those are all important public health components. And so we ended up doing this concept plan, and we're able to answer the question. There are some ways to integrate enhanced transit, namely BRT. There are some ways to integrate enhanced transit, namely BRT, along with some improved pedestrian connections along that corridor. And so, we're able to share our results, our renderings, in two different public meetings. All of the feedback we received from the meetings was very positive. And we had about 60 in attendance at our first community meeting. That's the picture that you see on your slide this morning, and about maybe 25 to 30 at our second public meeting. So, again, very positive comments. It is, of course, just a concept plan. It's kind of a starting point of maybe a bigger project. But, again, very, very positive feedback from the community. And then, this next slide is just a image of the actual corridor. And as you can see, we identified about eight different stops along that corridor. And we purposefully picked some of the most challenging stops. For example, Northwest Expressway and 63rd, or Northwest Expressway and Blackwelder, Classen and 23rd. Real challenging stops to see, you know, can you incorporate transit into those locations? And so, anyway, again, good feedback. It's a concept plan, but we do hope to make it part of a larger project in the future. And then, the last item I had for you this morning is I wanted to be able to provide council with an update with regards to streetcar operations. Although the streetcar is scheduled to begin service still two years from now, it is time for us, as the operator, to begin considering and planning for operations. So, what I have for you this morning is just a real high-level timeline to give you a sense of some of the things that we're already working on and things that we'll be working towards in order to prepare for a successful launch of the streetcar service. So, as you can see, currently, during, from now until mid-spring, we are working with a couple of different consultants to look at different options for delivering the maintenance and the operations of the streetcar. We are developing an RFP to advertise for a streetcar contract operator. And we'll be working with our consultants, developing and refining operations plans as well during that time. And then, late spring through the summer, we hope to complete our procurement process, have the RFP advertised, and hopefully be very close to selecting who that streetcar operator entity will be. And then, through the fall and on into 2017, we will continue preparing for operations. We'll be working on things like further refinements to the operations plan. We will be working on our safety plans. We will make plans to occupy the maintenance facility and begin setting those operations up. And then, in 2018, if the schedule holds for the streetcar delivery, and I do understand we're still in negotiations with the vehicle provider, but if the schedule holds, then we'll be preparing for delivery of the vehicles towards the end of 2017. And then, as the mainline track is finished, we'll be doing some testing, and, again, all in preparation of launching the streetcar service in 2018. So, again, I would expect some of these dates to change. There'll be some things that we add to this timeline. But, again, wanted to provide council with just an update as to what we are working on currently to prepare for running the streetcar. And so, with that, that concludes my presentation, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Just want to point out that I think we've, you know, at council's insistence, we've added some services over the last several years, and I think we've got a better system than we had a couple of years ago. I don't think we're there yet. I think we've got a ways to go, but I think we should be pleased with the progress that we've made today.
Definitely. I think the numbers show it. Can you go back to like the second slide you showed that showed month-by-month ridership? And while you're getting there, let me just quickly ask you, your best estimate for the streetcar operations budget would be how much per year?
Right now, $3 million annually.
So, between now and two years from now, we need to come up with $3 million annually. Okay? The number of buses that you currently have that are past their expected end-of-life is what percentage?
30% of our fleet is past its useful life. That's 18 buses.
Third, when you're trying to do more with less, and you're trying to give your transit system every advantage, signal prioritization, letting the buses go, anticipating letting them go through a green light, and so people can get to destinations faster, is that something we currently have the technological ability to do today, and is consideration being given to implementing that on, as a test, or on certain routes?
Yes, that is something we are looking at. In fact, we've done some research internally. We've been working a bit with Public Works to better understand the traffic signal system that we have. And so, yes, we would like to pursue that and identify particularly certain corridors where we think signal prioritization, or at least the ability to hold a green light, green longer, would certainly be advantageous to certain routes, particularly at different times of the day. So, that is something we are interested in looking at and have been actually researching for the last few months.
Okay, final question. So, looking at this, there's tremendous variation by month, specifically, say, September versus December and January. I mean, is that just, that's just weather?
Yes, that's the bad weather factor. When the days get cold and the days get shorter, we see that. It's typical. We always see a decline in ridership during the colder winter months.
So, in a, I mean, normally, in a city, frequency would be your biggest variation to increase ridership. Do you think it's possible that in Oklahoma City with so many bus benches and not very many, that that, that might be the, an investment that could get tremendous increase in ridership? I mean, looking at, looking at these numbers?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, yeah, the ability to catch a bus at a shelter that's protected from the wind would certainly, certainly better than just a bench. So, to what percentage of our riders, you know, consider that, I don't know. But, yeah, you would, you would think the more shelters we had out there, maybe it would encourage more people to use the service during the, you know, inclement weather.
How many stops do you have total on the system-wide?
Uh, you know, roughly 1,200 to 1,300 stops. The majority of those have benches, and then, as you can see, I've shared the shelter numbers with you. So, even though we've nearly doubled the amount of shelters we have in the system, we certainly still do have a ways to go, and we plan on addressing that.
About 90% of our stops will be bus benches?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Yeah, David?
Just a couple of points. Jason, the midnight service along I-240 is really going to be helpful to all the merchants along I-240, plus it just provides accessibility to individuals that may not have a vehicle or perhaps just one vehicle to the household. And so, they're no longer having to rush to do all their shopping, say, by 7 o'clock. They now have as late as midnight to go shopping, as well as those students who attend Oklahoma City Community College, they can take classes that go all the way to 10:00, 10:30, and still catch the bus. This route currently goes by two full-service grocery stores, along with a large number of variety retail stores along I-240, as well as numerous fast food and traditional restaurants. Plus, it goes by hospitals. So, I think it creates, like you've said, just greater access to a lot of services, especially for people who may not have a traditional 8-to-5 job, or who has to do these types of errands at night. So, thank you for that effort. One thing, and Councilman Shadid, it kind of addresses your point about having to wait on a bus stop without any type of shelter. Can you explain just briefly the new enhancement that came out about a year ago that allows you to track the specific location of the bus that you're going to be boarding? Because like in my case, where I pick it up on 89th, close to Penn, I can stand inside a retail store if I so choose to, knowing that, and I can monitor exactly where that bus is located. And so, those who like to try to get to the bus stop just as, as close to when the bus is going to arrive, that feature is so helpful, and anybody that has access to a cellphone can have that information. So, can you explain that real quickly, Mason?
Sure, yeah. It's part of the new technology that we have available, and we have the real-time bus locations, as you've mentioned, through our Journey Planner. And then, we also have the real-time text alerts. And, you know, different people have different preferences on how they monitor the location of their bus. I know I myself have used the text feature. It's, it's very convenient. You simply, you know, put in your unique stop ID, your bus route, and then it's just a matter of, as you're waiting on the bus, hitting the R button for the refresh, and you just continually receive updates of when that bus is going to arrive at the stop that you're at. So, so, yeah, both, both options are available. And, again, it's, that's what we're seeing nationally is, you know, people nowadays are really more interested in just knowing when their bus is going to be there, more so than is the bus on schedule? Because they, you know, they, they put more emphasis on when it's actually going to be there. So, yeah.
And then, a final point, as far as all the media coverage that you work with, historically, you all receive some of the highest awards at the National Transportation Association, and I'm sure this year will be no different. You constantly lead in those efforts to try to connect better with the public through the various media means, whether it's social media, or television, or radio, or in some cases, those things that you put on door handles. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a comment. It's so heartening to see how the ridership has really followed the dollars. And, you know, you've done such a great job in expanding service with little dollars to do so, but you can really see what a great difference it's made. And I think we're on the way. That's, you know, the whole plan, putting in place the new plan and the new routes was painful for some people, obviously, but I think we can see the results are so positive. I just look forward to the opportunity to do more.
Right. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a couple of things. One, I want to tell you how much I appreciate the expansion of OCCC. That is, so many of the students at OCCC don't have vehicles. That is just a really great opportunity for both the passengers and the college. It's, I really appreciate that. The second thing I want to ask you about is the hall pass. You and I, I'm asking this publicly. You and I've had this discussion privately a lot of times, but I want to talk about it publicly. So, many of the children that attend the public schools in Oklahoma City, both in the Pottman City System and the Oklahoma City System, $10 a month might as well be $1,000 a month. I just have not been able to come to an understanding of why we need to charge $10 a month for a child, for a high school student, or junior high student, to ride a bus, when it will not place any additional burden on the system, it does not seem to me. And it would potentially provide us with future riders. I'm just, the $10 a month, it seems to me, is a token amount which is beyond the capacity of most of the people that sorely need the transportation. Have you got any thoughts about a pilot program of some kind that would make it free for six months and see what, see what the real impact of that is? And I've heard stories about, oh, well, we can't have kids on the bus. When we asked the kids at Emerson about why they, what the resistance was, it was not other kids on the bus, it was the people that are riding the bus now that they were concerned about. It's, I think it's fear of the unknown, as opposed to a realistic fear that there's going to be somebody that'll do you harm one way or the other. I just don't see why we can't expand that hall pass thing to take care of all the kids that need it.
Well, you know, my thoughts on, on the hall pass program are, we certainly want to encourage any student to use our, our bus service. We want students on our bus. We feel like we can do a very good job of getting any student to and from school, their extracurricular activities, and so forth. I also think any type of safety perception about the service is not correct. I mean, when we do our surveys, you know, we always receive high marks in safety. I think our last one that I shared with you showed 75% of our, our customers that use our bus actually say it's a very safe service. So, so, yeah, part of the challenge is working through programs like we did with Emerson, where, you know, we're able to introduce students to the service, they use the bus service, and they realize that, yeah, there's a lot of advantages here. So, we want to do everything we can to encourage students to ride the bus. And I do agree, I think by getting young people involved, using public transportation, it sets the stage for the future. And, and that's how we're, one of the ways we're going to grow our system. As far as the, you know, the pilot program for a free, totally free hall pass program, I mean, that's really something that I would discuss with the COTPA Board of Trustees. I can just say at this point that the decision by the trustees has been to, to charge the $10 per month. And, again, I think it, you know, there's different sides of that, you know, story. You know, I think part of the reason that there was the desire to charge some type of, of fee for the pass is, for one, it was heavily discounted. I mean, it's 80% of the normal cost. But then, again, we wanted, I think there was some thought that we wanted to make sure that the students perceive there's some value to having the pass. So, don't disagree that there's probably students, it doesn't matter how valuable they think it is, if they can't afford it, they can't get it. But then, hopefully, there are some students, too, that by having to buy the bus pass, even if it is $10, they realize that, you know, there is a value to this service, and even though it's costing me $10, you know, I need to, I got to purchase my pass and keep up with it. So...
You don't think somebody that has the ability to get on a bus that doesn't have the ability is not going to place some value on that, the opportunity to ride the bus?
Well, no, I didn't, I didn't mean...
You think he has to pay for it when he doesn't have enough money? When he's on subsidized lunches, for example?
Yeah. I guess what I meant to say, and if I didn't communicate it clearly, is they would certainly see value in it, but if they can't afford to purchase it, then it does them no good.
Well, I understand that in theory, that if you don't have to pay money out of your pocket, you're not going to appreciate it. I don't, I didn't say I agreed with it in theory. I understand that that's, some people believe that. But when the money that comes out of a child's pocket to pay for it would buy his lunch or buy his dinner that night, it seems to me to be just a misplaced philosophy. So, anything you could do and to improve the, the opportunity for young people to ride the buses, I personally would appreciate very much. I also want to tell you how much I appreciate the fact that the increases that have been going on. This goes back to when Councilman Bowman was here, and we'd been, had flat budgets for a long, long time. And, but gradually, over that period of time, we have increased those budgets, and we've seen the fruit of that, and it's been very, very valuable, I think. The last thing is the comment you made, about 90% of the people that embark or on the buses do it from a shelter. Is that right? Did I hear that right?
No, I think, I think the point we were discussing was that approximately 90% of our bus stops do not have shelters.
Oh, okay. Well, do we have any, I know we can track where people get on, where they get off, all that stuff now?
Yes.
Can we track whether or not the addition of a shelter at a location increases use at that?
You know, we could. I think it'd be a good exercise for us to do. Now, we use our boardings and alightings. We use that data to determine where we put shelters.
Right.
So, you know, we're going to put shelters where we already have a lot of boardings and alightings.
Right.
But now that we've had some of these shelters in place for nearly a year, some of them that we started early, we could go back and look at that. I think that'd be an interesting exercise for us. We'd be glad to do that. See what the ridership or boardings and alightings are now versus before we had the shelter. Now, some of that's just going to be reflected in the growth of the system.
I understand.
But we could, we could look at it.
Well, it's one of the things that's driven, at least my sentiment with regard to shelters, is that if we had shelters, that makes the ride more enjoyable, more easier, more comfortable, all that, all those kind of things.
Absolutely.
And I would think, hopefully, that would manifest itself in more people using the facility. facility. And I just, you know, it's not a lot of economic cost of finding out, I'd like for you to find out.
Yeah, we'll look at that for you, be glad to.
But I really, I'm, I, it's, I'm serious about this $10 thing. I just, every time I think about it and I go to these schools that, where those kids are being asked to pay $10 a month, it's easy to, I mean, there are just so many of them that don't have the $10 and, and probably are the ones that need it the worst. And I, I'd just like to urge that to be looked at again, maybe a pilot program. Maybe a pilot program would dispel some of these concerns that there's going to be a riot on the, of, of ungrateful children on the bus. I think, I, I just don't think that'll happen. I think it will, ridership will go up. I, I think we'll all be pleased with it. I'd, I'd like to see something like that happen.
Right. And we do want students on the bus.
I appreciate all you've done. You and your predecessor are largely responsible for the great leap that we've made in our, in our transit system and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
James? I guess I can articulate maybe the other side of the $10. As far as I can remember, fares pay for approximately 12% of the total cost, correct?
That's correct.
You also said that the $10 a month is an 80% reduction.
In the normal monthly rate.
So, I think that that is, from my perspective, that's an incredibly generous deal.
Yeah.
And so, and so from, from my perspective, I, I think that the, the $10 a month is certainly appropriate, it's certainly generous, it's certainly something that would encourage kids to, kids to, to ride the bus.
I do need to clarify, we do have a student rate that's $25 per month, but so at 10, that's still half of, less than half of what the normal student rate is, but yes, a, a discount.
Jason, are you, are you, is the presumption that the fare for the streetcar and the bus are going to be the same?
Not necessarily. We're looking at different options now for fares. I say looking at different options, we've, we've talked about different ways to look at the fares so that basically you can pay a fare and ride both the bus system or the streetcar system. In other words, you know, transfer between the modes. We've also looked at just a straight, a streetcar fare versus just a regular bus fare. So initially, our thought is we would follow the same model as other cities and at least initially, the streetcar would perhaps be free as an introductory period, similar to how we did our bus, our bus fares when we made all the system enhancements. We had a short time where I believe the fare, we, we had free service. But we have not nailed down exactly what the cost of the fare would be, we just want it to be, we want the fare to be seamless between the two modes and then have the option for bus only or streetcar only fares.
You, you think you could potentially make yourself vulnerable like other cities if you made streetcar fares free for a relatively more affluent population versus major, more impoverished populations to pay for bus fare?
Well, I think as, I think as long as it's short-term and, you know, short-term could be several months, it could be a year, we don't know what that is yet, then I think that reduces that risk considerably. I mean, again, other systems have done it, but it's something that we'll seriously, we'll seriously consider as we move forward with a fare recommendation.
Quick question, Jason. Can you provide to us at, at a later date, the revenue breakdown in the ridership for, for the students, the $25 pass and also the $10 pass, the ridership and the revenue, please?
Yes, we can do that.
All right, thank you.
All right, anything else for Jason? Jason, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Anything else under city manager reports? All right, we're on to citizens to be heard. We have a series of people that have signed up to speak. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes or less. First is Garland Pruitt. Now, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Garland Pruitt, 952 North XXX Road, Choctaw, Oklahoma. Truly a pleasure to be before you all this morning. I've come before you before and you didn't go the route I wanted you to go, but I've come forth today for the, on behalf of the victims of the Holcroft case and the concerns of the citizens in general. This is an opportunity as we as a city continue to grow and continue to progress. When we walk out of this building today, we'll see scaffolds around the city showing the growth of our city. As we grow in that level, as we came forth today and listened to the expansion of addressing the issues concerning panhandling, things that we know that are happening, that we're in a position to fix, change and correct, as we made mention of a, a lack of healthcare for the state of Oklahoma based on decisions we make as leaders of those in charge, as I just made mention of the transportation. You would think in the great state of Oklahoma, Oklahoma City, the capital, when we compare ourselves across the nation and we don't have transportation, public transportation for our citizens, these are things for us to address. You all are in a position to deal with those particular areas. My concern is that we have some form of an oversight independent of what we have in place now. We have an excellent working relationship with our police department, Chief City and Prater. We have an excellent relationship, but as we move forward progressively in addressing the needs of our citizens, I think we need to have something else in place. Right now, we're anticipating the sentencing on Thursday of a particular officer. Got people coming in here right now from New York, got them coming in from DC, got them coming in from Kansas. We're under the spotlight, the limelight, the world stage, right now, Oklahoma. Our soonest let us down in the bowl game. Oh, you lost last night on the world stage, but we don't have to continue to fall on the world stage in a negative. You're in a position to make these things happen. You're in a position to be progressive, move forward, make decisions that helps us long term. So as these people come into town, we're anticipating the proper verdict to take place, but long-term, I want to plant the seed today for we, the council, to consider, consider an oversight review board beyond what we have in place. We have a citizen advisory board at this time, but we need more teeth. We need more teeth. So think about that, consider that as you hold your position. You're not going to always be in those positions. We got to think about Oklahoma long-term. Them same kids we were talking about protecting from panhandlers, I want to protect us citizens as we go to work, as we travel the city. In general, we need to be protected and you can put forth that protection by considering an oversight independent board of our police department and anything else that we might consider when we bring it before you.
Thanks, Garland.
Thank you.
Garland, can I ask you a question?
Yes, you can.
Is there another city that has such an oversight board that you think would be a good example or that works well?
Well, California has one, New York just put one in place, there's other cities that have them, but we can be unique and tweak in hours when we create them. Everything that we just came before us today took long-term planning, long-term continuous planning. We're in the process now of putting forth a summit that's working directly with our police department. We have a working relationship, but it's like anything else. The city council, civic organizations, citizens have to come together and be able to sit at the table and have open debate, open discussion as we move forward, as we put things in place. Just made mention of, we're finna start the midnight ride on the bus. That didn't happen overnight. It took planning. So we, 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 you, 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 you in a position to fix that, change that, correct that, put things in place? We got to have this open debate and open dialogue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roy Stafford?
Ms. Sawyer, the concerns of OKC compassion, or I don't know if you guys addressed her at all, but last week, four dirty OAs, one house. That's not, that's not going to, that's not going to work. These two young gentlemen right here relocated from Missouri. If you'll notice, the black eyes, that's from an attempted robbery that they were picked up by the Oklahoma City Police Department, transported to St. Anthony Hospital, dropped off, no assault reports taken. I intervened the following day as an advocate and... A Officer C. Franklin, 1967, was dispatched to take the assault report. First thing out of his mouth upon exiting his patrol car, for me not to contact the assault division again. Lieutenant Stacy, I was, I requested a supervisor to respond. Lieutenant Stacy knows me. He knows what I do. Lieutenant Stacy informed Officer Franklin, that's not his job. Officer Franklin was getting ready to smash me. I'm a G. If you don't know what a G is, Alice Troy is parking enforcement for the city of Oklahoma City. Her younger brother, Darius Washington, Kojak, and if you'll address Chief City and Mr. Prater, they'll tell you who these guys are that I'm going to name. Alice Troy is the older sister of, of Darius Washington. Kojak, a pimp, killed in 1986. My neighborhood associate, comrade, whatever, Ronnie White, Coco, I was dating his sister when Kojak shot Ronnie White and killed him. I'm a G. The reason I come down here all the time, God blessed me with something that I don't have to work anymore. I can manage my $1,000 a month that I get from post-traumatic stress disorder by being assaulted and whatever, 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 however, it don't bother me. It don't take a whole lot for me. All it takes for me is the existence to do something positive for these. You see what I'm talking about?
Thanks, Roy. Connie Johnson?
Good morning. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Connie Johnson and I grew up in Oklahoma City area. I presently reside in Forest Park, but I'll always be a resident of 2209 Northeast 22nd Street. I'm here today to just express my same concerns that Garland Patilla talked about, Garland Pruitt, I'm sorry. And I was personally unable to be at the proceedings because of some physical health reasons during the trial, but I was home watching from TV and I was personally, mentally and emotionally disturbed from what I saw. So as I thought on the proceedings and from the, from the time that this public servant perpetrated these heinous acts on this specific segment of society, in his mind, they were among the people whose lives don't matter. So he could perpetrate at his pleasure because no one would care. His values were formed in ways that meant he was privileged, he was a man, he was a police officer. And I'm here today because our values as Black women have been assaulted and insulted. I just want you to think for a moment if the lens had been reversed, if this had been 13 white women, and I say 13 because those were the only cases that were heard, but I know personally a woman who was assaulted, but her case was not chosen. But suppose it had been 13 white women and a Black police officer, just think about that for a minute. That is the depth of why we're here today to say to you, let's look at this through a lens that views all of us as people who matter, as people whose lives count for something and stand for something. If this situation was reversed, there would be outrage, there would be uproar, tantamount to a lynching. So I reflected on that, but the feedback that I got about the process the whole time wasn't good, from how the defense counsel's dismissive and disrespectful approach to the women just made people's skin crawl. The comments that were being circulated outside the courtroom by our personnel in the hallways, and I got this on good account from a good friend, but I actually ended up reflecting on the relief that I felt, that I think this whole city felt when this person was convicted. I'm hoping to have more relief on Thursday when he is sentenced, but I'm here today to say it could have been me, it could have been your mother, your daughter, your sister, your wife, it could have been your nephew, your uncle. This type of behavior perpetrated on any group in society is unacceptable and it's up to us as policymakers to make sure that something happens as a result of it, that this just doesn't fade into the background as one of those stories that typifies Oklahoma City, that we really give thought to some direct action that can be taken as a result of where we are today. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Connie.
Senator, if I might, if I might, do you have any suggestions on what direct action we might take? I, I share some of what you say, although I, the portion of it that I would add is that I think we should all take a great deal of satisfaction in knowing the system worked. I, I understand your concern about it, what if the roles were reversed? It probably would have worked much quicker had that happened because the, the victims would have reported it. That's just nature, that's the nature of our society now. But once the victims reported it, I think we, we should be here congratulating the district attorney's office for taking it forward and for the system working as it, as it's designed to work. I would hope that the community takes heart in that as opposed to sees it as a negative and takes heart in it. And if it hap, if the same situation happens again, that a, a person of color that was offended the way these ladies were would have reported immediately. And I, I would hope that would be the result of it, but if you've got other suggestions, this may not be the forum to, to, to discuss them, but I'm certainly willing to look at them. But, and I'm not denigrating your concerns because I had the same relief. I mean, literally, watching television that day and waiting to see what the jury was going to say was very traumatic for me. I mean, I wanted, I, I just couldn't visualize what would happen if, if, if the verdict had gone the other way. So I took, I had some great satisfaction in, in, when that came down, but, and I want to be part of the solution, but I would hope, again, I'm going to be redundant as I'm famous for, is that, that people of color should take some satisfaction in the fact the system worked and it's open to work. It didn't work as fast as it might have worked otherwise because the, the crimes weren't reported as it, like they would have otherwise. I think the guy was able to do it because he was confident that he was offending people that were, people who believed their lives didn't matter. And, and they have ample reason to believe that based on things that happen to them every day like Ferguson and all, we could go on and on and on. But I think we ought to be celebrating the fact the system worked and if you've got ideas about how to make it work better, I for one am willing to hear them and I suspect Mr. Prater's would be willing to hear them and, and our police chief would want to hear them.
I think, I think we have to start at the beginning in terms of flipping the script on this. The fact that these women were criminalized and were products of the criminal justice system and, and the whole state of affairs of criminal justice in Oklahoma is a whole nother discussion. So the fact that, that they felt for whatever reasons they couldn't report it... So the fact that they felt, for whatever reasons, they couldn't report it, they didn't report it, and would a woman of a different race not report, would she report it quicker if she were also criminalized? I don't think any woman who has been put down by our criminal justice system for whatever reasons, right? We know why women go to prison in Oklahoma, we know that we lead the nation in incarceration of women for specific reasons that have been identified. I think any woman in that setting would have done the same thing, they would not have reported it for that reason. So that's number one. But in terms of solutions, we are in the process of convening a summit that I believe is going to render some wonderful suggestions and proposals about where to go from here because it will engage law enforcement officers, it will engage community people who are interested in criminal justice reform for that matter. But I think when we do that, maybe we'll have a time to talk about mindsets. You know, again, I wasn't there, but there was concern expressed that, that Mr. Prater was never there. I don't know, but, but it was viewed as a downer for women, for black women, that our DA did not sit first chair or even occupy. I don't know if that's true, but that was a concern, that's the type of concern that was expressed. So it's the mindset that we'll have to get to through any kind of a summit process that gets us to, how can we start to view each other as brothers and sisters and care about each other just as much as we care about our own? And I don't know if that's possible, I don't know if you can legislate that, but it certainly is something we should aim for by having open frank, open and frank conversations and discussions and allowing people to bring those concerns to the table and then receiving them and hopefully trying to work to address, come up with some solutions.
Well, I guess I'd have to say that I'm personally pleased that the worst thing you can say about it is the conviction that David wasn't at the table. The conviction, I mean, that's a, what a minor thing that is, I mean, that
But it's major, Counselor.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, from the minds of the people.
It's totally form over substance, though. You got the conviction, we got the conviction, our police chief supported it, the police union supported it, the jury supported it. I guess maybe I'm missing the value of the form over substance part of it, but I thought the DA's office did a great job and I couldn't be prouder of the fact that it did.
Again, I wasn't there. I'm a person receiving the feelings from the community, wherever I went, well, this happened and that happened, and people were upset about that, so I couldn't dismiss how they felt that because Mr. Prater wasn't there all the time, what that meant to them. I can't, I can't explain for you, you know, for your eye, from your perspective, how that feels. And I think it's an emotional piece for people, it's emotional where that people feel they're not important, they're disregarded, their lives don't matter.
I'm going to say one more time, I think it's up to the leadership to take advantage of what happened and focus on the fact that the system worked. It worked exactly the way it's supposed to work. The police department, our police department, our police union, our district attorney's office, it worked. And for those that are put off by the system because they think it won't work, they were wrong. It did work.
And I'm grateful, don't get me wrong, I'm grateful that it worked. I mean, I hope it works even better on Thursday, but we won't know until Thursday. But I'm not here to say, what happened did not happen right. I'm here to say, now that it has happened, now that we have a verdict, hopefully we'll have a meaningful sentence on Thursday, but what are we going to do as a city to move on and heal these feelings that are going to persist? I mean, we can say, okay, we got it done, we'll put that to rest, Mr. Hossclaw will go away forever, hopefully, but what happens to the feelings that remain, the undercurrent of distrust and disillusionment and just being disregarded that people feel? And it's a real feeling among a lot of people here in Oklahoma City.
Senator, I'm going to say it one more time. You have to, you have to focus on the positive. If the leadership of the community focuses on details, and if they focus on things like the way the defense attorney treated the victims, that's the way it happens in every case. That doesn't have anything to do with black, white, it doesn't have anything to do with anything. That's how, that's how defense attorneys operate. But if we focus on those things, I think we may have, we may have a wound to heal. But if we focus on the fact that the system works, I think we can go forward here together. Because I had the same fear, Senator, I had the same fear you did. I had that gut feeling that, oh my God, this can't, this has got to be a guilty verdict. So I had that same sense of relief you did. But I'm willing to focus on the fact that the system worked, and I think that's where we need to start as opposed to starting, we ought to be celebrating the fact that the system worked. That's just my opinion.
I appreciate that.
Connie, thank you.
I focus on the positive too, but again, from my eyes and from your eyes, it's two different worlds.
Senator, is there a, is there a set date and time for this summit, or is that, is that something we can participate in?
Yes, there is.
January 27th, and I believe I sent you an invitation for it, and I sent the invitation to everybody.
Where is it?
At the Oklahoma Judicial Center. It begins at 8:00, but the sign says, "There will be three people to be there."
Can she come up to the mic so everyone can hear?
Well, no, we're going through the people that have signed up to speak.
Could you speak louder or tell me an announcement?
I'll always say it when I get to the mic.
Oh, she's coming up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Milton Combs.
It's an honor to be here this morning. My name is Milton Combs, president and CEO of the People Foundation, a nonprofit tax-exempt recovery home program that services convicts and drug addicts. And so I hear daily, in fact, I have a couple staying in the house that came last night at midnight, and the woman has, of course, suffered from domestic violence and violence in her life. She is also one of those been convicted of crimes and she's trying to get back into recovery. We have a real problem in this country with violence of all types, and we specifically have a problem, of course, with violence against women in this country that we all know about. It's been written about, is being written about everywhere, and we also have a problem with violence against women in our own communities and here in Oklahoma City. And in much of the work that I've done with our distinguished chief on this issue over the years and also working with him to develop better policies and procedures for our police officers, I have to commend both he and District Attorney Prater for their actions in this case because I remember the Glitterdome incident. I remember Glitterdome, do you all? Yeah, I remember Glitterdome. And so we've made good progress in this area. We need to do a lot more. Violence amongst our minority women is horrendous here in this city. Violence amongst our black women is horrific, and in addition, violence against young black women, teenage black women. We started an organization called EVE about, what, two years ago? And ending violence everywhere, and I bent the chief's ear many a time talking about an anti-citywide anti-violence campaign. It involved the NAACP, Midwest City Councilwoman Christine Allen, Brandon Claves has given endorsement to it, as has the chief. He has said that this is a good thing. We need citywide participation, including our leaders, to really begin to develop methodologies so we can get the word out to people that violence is not only not acceptable, but that we can do something about ending violence in our cities. And I'm not talking about reducing it, I'm talking about ending it. There are a number of organizations across the city, Jan Perry and the YWC and all the good work they're doing. They are a part of a collaboration of organizations that needs to expand. We need not only the blessing, but the participation of this distinguished city council in this effort. So I'm going to call on Councilwoman Shadid and Councilwoman Pettis to join us in our discussions that we have regularly with Ending Violence Everywhere and our meetings at my recovery home in our conference room, to talk about methodologies to improve our reduction in violence in our town. And we think that this will work, it will be unique in the nation as we move towards really addressing domestic violence in our poor communities, violence against children in our schools. We got $150,000 in Midwest City to do a Boys and Girls Program over there, and we've seen a reduction in violence in a community that's been known for a long time as murder one. We're going to get some more funding over there to work for kids 14 through 18. These are the kinds, and we don't need the funding, we have outreach workers, we're getting churches to come in to do that. Garland and I have walked the community, Sarah and I have walked the community. We're going to do grassroots things to reduce violence and we need y'all's help, we need y'all's blessing, we need y'all's involvement. We can do this as a collaboration, announcing we're going to end violence here in Oklahoma City. This will have an impact on everybody, law enforcement, attorneys, we have a lot of instances of violence by professionals, but it will help, we get this message out, people will, you know, guys will have a second guess about doing violence against women.
Thanks, Milton.
Thank you.
Sarah Bana.
Salvador is going to pass along some information I've brought along with me. My name is Sarah Bana and I am one of the co-founders of the Ending Violence Everywhere EVE Coalition and a public advocate for a more compassionate society. I thank this honorable body for giving me the opportunity to speak to you guys today. The statistics that are being distributed are on the status of women in Oklahoma. As an immigrant from the Third World, as a female whose parents fled so that their two daughters could have a more just and equal life in America, I found two particular statistics very staggering. Oklahoma is ranked first for the incarceration of women. Two-thirds of those are single mothers. Oklahoma is also ranked third for the rate of domestic violence. Please read those statistics as I make some comments on the status of wellness of women and her environment. Her body is ravaged and her children are enslaved. Her very essence under assault and her dignity as a creation of God manipulated by man. Men make her an object and subject of his curiosity. Though she's your mother, as the senator said, your wife, your daughter and your sister, too many stand still and idle as they rape, assault, abuse and mock her. They do not come to her rescue as she struggles for life, liberty and the pursuit of justice. And too often, after the victims are branded, the same book of justice which failed to protect her in the first place is thrown at her. In this case, it took 13 strong courageous women to convict a rapist. I now ask the system that has obtained justice today, what of her, what of their future? What of their children's futures? What will happen to these women when the headlines fade? Will you support and stand with them or will we all forget? What does the future hold for the women of Oklahoma, this nation and this world? So I pose this question to all of you here today. What will you do as individuals in the freest nation in the world to change the status of women and the culture that allows this type of treatment of women? Thank you. And I will make a comment on the PAC, the Police and Community Trust Summit, it has been a part of a year-long initiative. We originally invited the city manager and a few others to kind of organize and help us plan. I was told at that point that it wasn't an issue that you guys should get involved with or it wasn't your place to get involved with, but I do extend that invitation and I'll make sure that I'll send an email to every one of you guys. We'd love to have your support. I know the support of the chiefs has just been tremendous for us, so thank you, guys.
We have executive session, we'll be back.
Mr. May, if you will, I do have a couple of comments. I could give a sermon on this, but I'm not going to give a sermon, but what I will say, my prayers go out to the victims, the survivors of what happened. I did attend the trial and matter of fact, I was present a couple of times a week during the trial, and so I did have the opportunity to hear the victims, I did have the opportunity to hear what was said not only about the victims, but what was said about the community that I do represent, proudly represent. I do understand that it is legal games for the defense attorney to say what he, say what he will about the victims, but how he talked about Northeast Oklahoma City, quite frankly, was tragic. It was tragic for him to talk about the victims the way he did. I am pleased that the officer was found guilty. I was down here when the verdict was read. The minute that I learned that the verdict had been reached, I immediately came down here because again, this happened in the community that I proudly represent. There are some things that the community is, the community have some concerns about as policymakers. I think we will work with the community to address those issues. But I do want to say thank you to our police chief and our DA. I raised several questions with the DA on several things and the DA will provide his response to the community why certain things were done, but I did have an opportunity to talk to the DA to express my frustration with some things. So our police chief, I think, did a great job, but there's still work to be done, clearly still work to be done. As I, of course, I serve on the National Legal Cities Human Development Committee and we have been discussing police relations in minority communities, and I hear what other communities are facing all across the country. In some cities, I've had the opportunity to hear from black elected officials of their concern about their own police department, their own police chief. Here is a case where, once it was fully reported, our police department fully investigated. I can tell you, my colleagues across the country, some of them cannot say that, some of them cannot say that they, their police department fully investigated a crime like this. I've heard oftentimes in the last couple of years where police departments did not go after their police officers. So I just want to put that footnote there that our police department did go after a bad cop. Our DA did prosecute a bad cop, but overall, our system needs some work and I think the community is willing to work with the police department in this council to form a better relationship. Again, my prayers go out to the survivors, to hear their testimony. You couldn't help but to cry. To hear what they had to go through, you couldn't help but to leave that courtroom upset. To hear how the DA talked about the victims and then to hear, not the DA, excuse me, the defense attorney, how the defense attorney talked about the victims, how the defense attorney talked about the community that I proudly represent. I must admit that I left out that room, out of that courtroom, upset, but I am grateful that a guilty verdict happened. The officer was not found guilty of all the crimes, I wish he would have been found guilty of every single crime that he committed, but he wasn't. But I am grateful that, you know, he did But I am grateful that, you know, he did receive some due just. But again, my prayers go out to the victims and special thanks to our IDA and our police chief.